First thing, we'll do flag salute. And if I could get Jerry since he's been with us for awhile, I think he might be listening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. And Kathy, I guess, do a roll call.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Crabbe.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Brentonall.
Here.
Mr. Denial.
Here. We haven't had a full, yeah, a full board here in a long time. Oh, okay, Mike, you better come up and give your report before we get out of hand here.
I'd like to welcome our newest planning commissioner, Jerry Brentonall. Nice to have you back again. Wanted to update you on a couple of items that are going to be coming before the board in the coming weeks. On October 20th, they will be considering the C-Mix Patterson Sand and Gravel Expansion. There were some rezoning issues that need to take place out there. This item did not come before the planning commission because we are implementing direction from the board to address some zoning issues out there. And so it goes right back to the board without coming before the planning commission. But we will keep you aware of what's happening. It's really just some general cleanup of zoning issues out there. An item that was heard before your planning commission, the enclaves at Granite Bay, your commission denied it on a three to two vote. That action was appealed up to the plan, up to the Board of Supervisors, and it was scheduled to be heard on October 20th. The applicant has since decided to request a continuance on that, and so we will be going to the board on the 20th requesting an indefinite continuance on that project. And there's no known date when that may be coming back. Just a reminder for you, October 22nd, there will be a planning commission meeting. This will be the first time we've actually had two meetings in numerous months. And, no, you do not get a raise because of that. But it will be a Tahoe meeting. So you get to drive, well, you get to stay at home, and everyone else gets to drive up to Tahoe. We have at least two items that will be on there. The Kings Beach Gas Station, there's a conditional use permit for a gas station facility in Kings Beach, and there's a proposed rezoning up at the Alpine Meadows, the Caldwell rezoning. They want to take some open space area and convert it to residential use, and there are some avalanche zone issues. So could be an interesting item for your consideration. Granite Bay Community Plan, there is a workshop planned for October 28th. It will be held at the Lutheran Church on Douglas Boulevard, and it's intended just as an open house opportunity for residents to come in and find out a little more about the land use changes and policy changes that have been requested. We will give you an update on that at your October 22nd meeting. And on November 3rd, staff will be going to the board with the Placer County Conservation Plan, requesting a direction to move forward. We're at a point where we actually have the plan almost ready to be submitted to the state and federal agencies. And so once we get official direction from the board, we will come back to your commission and update you with a thorough overview of where we've been and where we're going with that plan. And that concludes staff's comments. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our 1005 item and its subdivision. Oh, excuse me, I was corrected. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Get out of order here. At this time, if there's anybody in the public that would like to address the planning commission, now is your opportunity to do it, but it has to be anything other than what's on today's agenda. So if there's anybody out there that would like to make a comment to us or whatever, now's your chance.
So we get a comment to, can we make comments about today's agenda?
No, no, that's what I said. It can, cannot be on today's agenda.
Do we have a chance?
Oh, yes, you, you will when the time appropriate.
I'll be back on the same question after we hear what goes on today. We do have rights to get up and speak on what they talked about and what the planning commission is doing, correct?
Yeah, on, if it's on an issue that's on today's agenda, yes, there is a public comment period to where I'll open it up and then you can come up and make whatever comments you want at that time, ask questions.
Then is now my time to speak to something else then that's not on here?
Yes, if it's not on today's agenda, that's what this time's for.
My, I'm Karen Salmons. I live on, at the Atwood Two House, houses over there. And I was wondering if there was a condition in an old, in a, there was a condition that it was number 74, and it was to allow single-story homes.
This is, this is on the agenda.
Oh, this is on the, it's.
They, she, what you should do is hold your comments until that comes up, and then the chairman, like he indicated, will ask anybody in the public if they want to come up and comment on it. But this is on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't know that was on the, I thought it was.
It is.
The decreased setbacks or something of some of their lots.
And as well as the fence issue, which I think is.
That's not my issue.
It's, it's all related.
It's all, all wrapped in.
Oh, okay.
If it, if it's something where, that has to do in any way to anything that's coming up today, then that's when you'd make the comment.
And that, it is, it is coming up, so.
Okay, as long as I can speak about it.
You can, you will.
Okay, have I confused everybody out in the audience enough yet?
Totally.
Totally. I apologize for, for that. We should have moved on.
You can use your leaders.
Oh, okay, moving on, okay. Michael, just, just do the presentation.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mike Wells with the Planning Department. We have a subdivision modification of variance application in front of you today for your consideration on Atwood Ranch Three. The Atwood Ranch Three project is a 143-lot subdivision on a 56-acre site in North Auburn area. The surrounding land uses here include the DeWitt Center to the north up in here, Atwood Two subdivision and Auburn Elementary School in here, Hidden Ravine subdivision and rural residential, here's Hidden Ravine, and rural residential to the south, and larger lot rural residential here to the west. So here's the subdivision we're going to be talking about today. The tentative map was approved by the planning commission in November of 2003. The board approved a rezoning and certified the EIR in January 2004. Since that time of approvals, the streets have been constructed, the utilities have been installed, and several homes have been constructed on the property. Taylor Morrison Homes is here today, they are the applicant. They recently submitted an application requesting a modification to Condition 14 of the approved conditions of approval for the subdivision, along with variances to setback and fence height. We'll discuss these requests in that order. Condition 14 of the approved subdivision map restricts construction of slab foundations to garages and basements only on certain lots in the subdivision. This condition was developed from the grading and drainage study that was a part of the EIR for the original project. One finding of this study was that in order to provide protection for the wetland and other sensitive areas on the site, that grading should be limited to that which is necessary for the construction of homes on, on the site. The applicant's requesting a modification to this condition to allow for pad grading and slab foundations on the lots that are specified in this condition. The applicant states that this modification would result in combining all the grading activities into a single event rather than on a lot-by-lot basis over a longer period of time, and that grading a larger area is typical for subdivision developments in the county. The applicant also states that larger-scale grading will significantly reduce the grade differences between adjoining lots and reduce the need for retaining walls between these lots. Staff reviewed the site-specific grading plan that was submitted with this application and determined that the grading that's being proposed is within the framework of the grading analysis of the EIR, and that the site's open-space parcels provide protection for the wetland and sensitive areas on the site, and that the storm water prevention plan and the conditions on the grading permit will provide the necessary protections to these wetland and sensitive areas from the grading that's being proposed. We'll get on to the variances here. Let's just stay with the setback variance here, it's in the same area. The setback variance, the front setback requirement for the subdivision is 20 feet to structure. There's a condition in the approved map that includes design elements that are intended to reduce the visual effect of a two-car garage facing the street, and this is Condition 72. One of the elements within this condition is to recess the garage five feet back from the front of the house. And we see this in this, whoops, go back here, in this picture here. This is a typical streetscape here within the subdivision where the garages are set back five feet from the livable area of the house. Most of the lots, undeveloped lots in the western portion of the subdivision are about 10,000 square feet in size, and these are these in this area all the way up through When the front, side, and rear setbacks, the building envelopes and any sloped areas along the perimeters of the lots are taken into account, the outdoor living area on the lot has been significantly reduced. In order to provide additional backyard area on these lots, the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the front setback requirements from 20 feet to 15 feet for the livable area of the house and to 20 feet for the garage, and this would be consistent with Condition On to the fence height variance. This affects the fences here, this is Atwood Two subdivision here, here's Atwood Ranch Three, and the fence height variance applies to this area in here. And the photos we see here are basically lots one through five that are undeveloped right now. Here's Lot One, and five is all the way in the back. Here's Lot Five looking back towards one. And what you see here is a retaining wall and a step up to the fences in the background up here to the Atwood Two subdivision. In response to conversations with homeowners in the Atwood Two subdivision regarding the views from the rear of their properties, the applicant would like the option of increasing the fence height along the rear property line from six feet to eight feet if requested by the property owner. So a variance would be required then to exceed the six-foot height standard. There's a couple of issues that are in the staff report that need to be addressed here. One has to do with correspondence that was received. In your packet, you do have a copy of a letter from Mr. Heath, a property owner in the Atwood Two subdivision, regarding the future development on lots one through 10. In this case, it would, oops, in this case, it would actually be lots one through five, which are currently vacant in here. Mr. Heath and several of his neighbors were under the impression that only single-story homes would be built on these lots, and that the conditions of the subdivision restricted construction to single-story on these lots. Condition 73 limits residential construction to single-story only on those lots that are adjacent to, get back here, Atwood Road and Kemper Road to the south, and is specific to lots, let's see, lots 10 through 13, which is up in the corner, and these lots here, and these lots along here. The reason that this condition was put in place was to reduce the massing effects of two-story houses along public rights of ways. The last thing we want to talk about is, or the potential environmental impacts here, a negative declaration was prepared that addressed any potential environmental effects of modifying the grading that was originally analyzed in the EIR. This assessment determined that within the framework of the grading and soils analysis of the EIR and within the scope of site-specific grading plan that was submitted with the application, that the environmental effects of modifying Condition 14 to remove the grading restrictions are less than significant. On September 8th, the North Auburn MAC voted unanimously to recommend the planning commission approve the entitlements that were requested today. With that, staff is recommending the commission adopt the negative declaration that was prepared and approve both the modification of the subdivision and the two variances that were requested. You have any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Rich. Just a clarification on the setback, the 15-foot setback, and as it reads, it looks like there's a, it'll be a 20-foot driveway that is still present with the five, with the five-foot setback from the front of the.
Exactly. Any garage would need to be 20 feet from, from the property line.
And the property line is at the street or is at the sidewalk?
At the sidewalk then. And it'd be similar to this, this arrangement we see right here, where the garages are set back or off the side here.
So if somebody's got a pickup truck that's approaching 20 feet in length, and they park it in their driveway.
It will fit in the driveway, it won't, it won't extend over onto the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Michael, if we consider the 15-foot setback, have any thought been giving, been given to a landscape plan for those lots so that?
There's a, there's a, almost a guarantee that the setback will become less noticeable being less than it would have otherwise?
There's overall landscaping that's required as far as like street trees and this type of thing, not, not, not per condition in this case.
There's one draw, this, one picture that you showed, not one of those, but one of the others that showed, no?
Keep going here, come on.
There.
That one there.
Now, that doesn't look quite so bad because of the intense landscaping, and that's, looks like it's marginal setback there.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I think something we should think about maybe is if we're going to give up five feet, we should get more landscaping, I guess.
This is, this is the standard landscaping for the subdivision here.
Uh-huh.
So that's what, something similar will be put in on all these lots here.
Okay.
Yep.
Those are at the 15-feet setback.
And these are at 15 feet right now. And these are four of the model homes for part of the subdivision.
Thank you.
So landscaping is part of the package?
Front yard.
It will be required of the homeowners, yes.
Oh, okay, that they put in the landscaping to the design of the.
Maybe that's a question we can ask the applicant, you know, if they do the.
But the lots will be landscaped similar to this, it will be a requirement. As far as the specifics for the plan, the applicants here can kind of explain that.
Yeah. Michael, I need you to walk me through a little bit of this, specifically with respect to the, to this setback. Back in 2003, when this project came through, one of our concerns was the fact that because of the size of the lots, it would appear to be crowded. And Larry, I think your comment kind of addressed that, if we had the houses encroaching upon the street too closely. So we set it back at 20 per the standard, and there it sat until today. And now the applicant comes forward and wants us to make certain findings to support a variance. One of them is there are special circumstances that exist that would warrant changing from the county standard. Other than the fact that the backyards are, are, are small, is there anything else that you can provide the commission to help us make that finding?
Well, I think the fact that we do have the setbacks that are associated with the smaller lot design here, like it's been explained, and that there are, there's still going to be sloped areas between lots. There may not be necessarily retaining walls there, but there might be sloped areas. And the actual flat usable area is going to be reduced because of those factors, setbacks, the building envelopes, and the slopes between the properties.
One potential resolution of this would be to combine lots by the developer, would it not?
That's one option, sir.
Was that even mentioned?
Not in our package.
Why is that, I'm not surprised. One of my concerns is that, and you've been here long enough to know that this is, this is true, that as soon as we approve a variance like this, the neighbor down the street comes in and he wants to follow suit too, and the neighbor from another subdivision comes in, and if the standard becomes, will allow you to change the front setback if your backyard is quote "too small," how do we address that?
It's going to be a real problem. These are 10,000 square foot lots. I would imagine that somebody would have a better case for a smaller lot because there is significantly reduced area. But I think on a case-by-case basis, we just have to look at those.
Because you know that people come in and say that, they'll go through a neighborhood and pull out this lot and that lot and say you allowed it here.
We know that, yes.
I just have to be ready to differentiate this the next time the request comes in, and it will.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to address this?
Thank you very much. I'm Jay Pollak from Taylor Morrison. Thank you for, for your consideration today. We appreciate all the hard work that staff has put in to bring this forward. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration here. If I can walk through a little bit just the three components of it and give you a little bit of our logic and perhaps address Mr. Brentonall's concern. The grading, when we went in and looked at the plan, when you look at the houses that are out there today, the lots are fully graded. If they're a 10,000 square foot lot, they're not a large country lot. As such, our goal is just to get everything done at once instead of it being sort of piecemeal. Some of that relates to foundation, but mostly it's just getting it all knocked out at once. As it comes to the variances, there are really, really two very different issues with the two. The request to, to move the face of the house to 15 feet is to make these lots consistent with the lots within the adjoining neighborhood. The existing area where Taylor Morrison builds today, which is within the same community but on the other side of the open space area, allows for a 15-foot face of, of house, again, garage at 20 feet to address, you know, car parking concerns and whatnot. And our goal is that, that the lots be essentially considered the same. Justification-wise, you know, there are a lot of slopes between the lots here, a lot of encroachments coming into the rear and sides as the lots step down, down the street. And, and the other component being the requirement from, from the county that there be that five-foot stagger in the homes is not typical for, for single-family construction within the community. So we're, again, trying to bring parity between the two, the two villages within the same project, but we're certainly sensitive to the concern that was raised. The fence issue as it pertains to Lot One through 10 is really in response to some neighbor concerns that have been out there. As, as staff just indicated, there was no condition placed on the subdivision that those homes be single-story homes. As we've gone through the permitting process, we've heard concerns from the neighbors about the, the construction of two-story homes on, really, I believe it's lots one through five that are remaining to be permitted. We actually went in and, and looked at all of those and met with staff to try to figure out a way to get single-story homes to fit on all of those remaining five lots. Unfortunately, there is, in the picture that staff showed earlier does a good job of depicting it, there's a significant slope difference between the Atwood Two subdivision and the Atwood Three lots that are next door. So when we looked at putting, putting single stories on two of those remaining lots, we weren't able to accommodate it because we only ended up with about six feet from the back door of the house to the retaining wall that held up that hill. Single-story homes are just typically a deeper footprint, as the commission knows. The request for the eight-foot fence was in response to some of the neighbors had, we've had ongoing discussion back and forth, and some had requested that, that we construct a larger fence. We indicated back to them that we, we weren't allowed to, but that would we request it from the county. Our intent is not to build an eight-foot fence on any lot that the owner, the owner within Atwood Two does not want the eight-foot fence. So our intent is to go meet with those folks afterward and decide if they want a six-foot fence or an eight-foot fence, we'll install whatever is their preference. So I hope that addresses your concerns. I'm happy to answer any other, any other questions or comments you might have.
Landscaping.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Landscaping.
Landscaping. The, what you see on the, on the picture there is our typical front yard landscape package. Front yard landscaping is included within all home purchases. There's also an active HOA within the community that enforces, I believe it's a six-month timeline for installation of both front and rear yard landscaping. But typically, well, not typically, in all cases to date, front yard landscaping has been installed prior to close of escrow.
Okay. Jay, I did not know that the Atwood Two setback was 15 feet, so that was helpful. But in effect, if we allow your 15 feet because the neighborhood next door is 15 feet, have we, by de facto action, set a new standard within the county? How do we then tell Atwood Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight that they can't have 15 feet but rather have to stick with the, with the standard?
Let me, let me clarify just a little bit. When I said it, the other part of the community, it's still a portion of Atwood Three that is, that has that 15-foot setback. I, I think when it comes to what, what really looking at, at least in my mind, what, what the county's trying to accomplish with the setback, is trying to accomplish a streetscape that, that is attractive to people as they drive by, that creates an area for landscaping to be, that allows for vehicles to park off the street. I think when you, when you include that, that separation between the face of house and the face of garage, that five-foot separation, I think you accomplish a lot of what the county was, was outed after with their original 20-foot setback versus the entire house being flat at 20 feet. So I think your, again, your concern's a, a good one. I think that, that stagger addresses, at least in my mind, a lot of what the county would be trying to attain from, from the setback requirement.
Yeah, my recollection was so that it would prevent a crowded feeling in, in the neighborhood where the lots were smaller and it would give a more open feel. But what I don't want to set is a standard that if a developer comes in and proposes 10,000 square foot lots, as long as he's got a five-foot setback on, on the house, then the 15 feet becomes the standard. I'm just trying to differentiate your project from the next one that we'll see and you won't, and we have to deal with it. And they will cite you as authority for the proposition that they're entitled to this.
Absolutely. I think there are more slopes on the Atwood Three project than you would see in typical 10,000 square foot or smaller subdivisions. I think if, you know, being familiar with that site, there are significant steps between adjoining lots, and there are even more significant steps when you go back of lot to back of lot between those homes. In many cases, you've got steps that are four, six, eight feet in elevation change, which is certainly not typical for that sort of 10,000 square foot, single-family development. So hopefully that gives you that, that separation when, when a future developer comes in and asks for that, that same type of situation. If they do have that, the more flat-lot scenario, I think that, that the 20-foot setback becomes, you know, more, more readily attainable.
That is helpful, thank you.
Questions that I might answer?
Okay, I guess that's it for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll open it up to the public, so now's the time for you to come up and, if you have any comments, questions.
Hi, I'm Eric Hill, and I'm the owner of Lot Five in the Atwood Ranch subdivision that backs up to the five homes in question. And my issue is only the fence, because I did not own the house when the, when they made all the decisions about single-story or two-stories, I really can't complain about that. I would like to see single-story homes there, but I understand the issue. My issue is with the fence. I'd like you to deny the request for an eight-foot fence along that border, and my reasons are three here. First of all, it's already on top of a 10-foot erm of dirt and a retaining wall, so the fence is already pretty high up in the air. Second, and, and so there's no, there's no privacy issue from the new subdivision. Second, and, and so there's no, there's no privacy issue from the new subdivision with this fence being six or eight feet. Secondly, if you construct an eight-foot fence, the wind loading is going to be significantly higher, probably double if you look at the engineering on it. And thirdly, uh, if it's, I didn't realize it was optional, which is why it was requested. If it's optional and I choose not to have an eight-foot fence there and the next, nor neighbor does, it's going to look very, it's gonna be quite a hodgepodge, and the, and the breaks between six and eight feet are not gonna line up with the homes in the new subdivision, so they're gonna have funny-looking fences in their backyard. So, uh, for those three reasons, I would like you to reject that request. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Karen Salmons, like I said earlier, and, um, I do understand that they were trying to put the single stories, um, as we had complained, because at the very first proposed hearing, we were told that we would have one through, one through nine, actually, back in the day. It was, uh, supposed to be for affordable housing, single-story. So, that is why originally we did come to, um, sign a petition and, um, back, um, AR Associates to develop the land. So, with, with that being said, as I, as I found out two months ago, um, as I was over and visiting the homes, I found out that lots one through five were going to be for two stories, and six through nine are single stories, and that's fine. So, my concern was with one through five. So, I went to the planning, uh, department, and they had told me that, um, I, I, what was requested were two-story permits. They weren't issued at the time, and so I do recognize that, um, Taylor Morrison was trying to help us and trying to figure out some way of putting a single-story home on there, which was very, very appreciated. And as of, just this week, when I went over to go check the process and, or the progress, excuse me, of these homes, is when I found out that the county had denied the, um, the resubmitted plans for the single story due to certain kinds of setbacks. At that time, I didn't understand the setback rules and regulations and all those kinds of things, as I'm kind of new to this whole game. So, I am trying to get all the information of plot plans and setback, you know, regulations, and I'm trying to, um, understand what are the legal, um, you know, setback requirements for everything. And, um, as stated earlier, at least some of that was addressed, and I understand that. So, now my concern is, okay, so I see that one through five, they're not going to be able to fit. So, is that because of the home size? Or, or can you put a smaller one on those one through five and, and be in line with all the rules and all the setbacks that are required for this plan? I mean, does it have to be, um, was it, was it requested, and I don't know if it was requested, to put a, a 21,000 square foot home? Or can you put an 1,800 or a 1,600? Can you make it a little smaller to accompany that, to, to be able to do that? And, and I guess that is my question. Is that, is that feasible? And, and that's all I'm asking. So, if anybody can address that, and if there's, if there's other reasons because of the setbacks that the one-story wouldn't fit, I would think, well, maybe we can make the house a little smaller. So, um, I'd just like everybody to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Yeah.
I'm Randy Salmons, 2207 Ranch House Court, Ranch House Two. Could we get that one picture of the, uh, uh, houses, line of houses that you pointed out? Oh, appreciate it. Uh, that was, my wife was just speaking, and she did come into the planning department and found out that on lot, yes, thank you very much, on lots one, two, and four was gonna be one-story. Where in, that lot two is right behind our house. We have a two-story house, so does the, uh, people next to us. We thought that was okay. Uh, then last week, she found out that the county, for whatever reason, denied the one-story request by, by them, uh, and we're here to say we would like one-stories. We have five two-stories on our block that would be facing their two-stories. So, I don't want five two-stories behind us. The view would be taken away from us. But having back-to-back two-stories wouldn't, definitely wouldn't look good for anybody driving down. These pictures here, they're all one-stores. That's all we're asking for. One-story five houses on our block or the block behind us, and, uh, fence, we don't care about. I personally don't care about the fence, 'cause if you have a one-story, uh, like, like he said, the, uh, the hill will take care of it. So, please reconsider, I don't know why you pulled and denied his one-story request, but I'm here to ask you to put it back and let him do his one-stories. Thank you.
Okay, I, I do have one question. You said your, the houses are back-to-back. There's no street in between?
No, sir.
Just yards, yards?
Just yards.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, and one of the pictures showed it pretty good, if you wanna...
But you're up on the hill.
Slight little, uh, uh, 10-foot, uh, from the, uh, foundation, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to talk to us about this issue? Seeing no, no one, I'll close it off and bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Richard, we're looking for leadership here. I would be curious to have a discussion on the issue, uh, that Mr. Hale raised about uniformity of the appearance of the fence. I can understand the desire to give each adjoining homeowner the option, whether they would like a, an eight or a six-foot fence behind them. But he raises a good point. If we end up with, uh, varying heights all over the place, does that destroy, uh, some of the appearance and livability of this, of this community by having six to eight? I don't know. Larry, you're in this business. What, what do you think? Should it all be one or the other, or, or optional?
I think it would look a little better to have it all the same, frankly, because as you change heights, you actually have to add a funny piece on top in most cases that looks kind of tacked on to start with. And so, typically, I think if you really wanted it to look better, it would be all one material, probably.
Yeah.
Uh, eight-foot fences aren't a common thing, and so what they end up doing is adding a little funky piece on top in most cases. Now, maybe they'll go to the trouble of buying eight-foot material, I don't know. But it does probably have a negative visual impact. And it's a maintenance thing, because that, if you, if you do just add the two feet on top, it's always heavily falling off or looking kind of tacky. Just to... So, I tend to agree with you. I think maybe it would, probably, that one issue would make some sense just to standardize it at six feet. I don't think the proponent seems to care when he's just trying to be a nice neighbor.
So, how do we, as a commission, address this, then?
Are you talking about the fence?
Mm-hmm, just the fence.
If you sit down in the motion, you just say, "Deny the eight-foot and be six-foot."
Just leave it at six-foot uniformly? Then are we doing a disservice to those neighbors who wanted a little bit more privacy? I mean, it's kind of a real balance.
Isn't that what vegetation's for? Can't you plant stuff that grows beyond your fence?
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Did you, you have a question, Rich?
Well, yeah, I guess I do. I have a thought at least, but maybe we better button this one up before I jump on another...
Well, if there's no more cussing and discussing, I will move that the Planning Commission adopt the negative declaration of...
Oh, no, I have...
Oh, you had more before that?
I thought you were gonna do the fence.
Oh, you want to do, no, I'm gonna do it all in one gulp.
Okay, well, yeah, now, any, any questions on other issues?
Yeah, I, I guess I have a question on other issue that's kind of related to the same block, because, uh, because there's a bank behind these houses that are gonna be two-story, that's 10-foot high. I guess kind of the question that's running through my mind is, with a 10-foot-high bank back there, in effect, the houses that are constructed, even though they're two-stories, would be very similar to having a one-story house to the neighbors on the backside. And so, I don't think that's one of the issues that's really specifically in this, but to me, it seems like, um, you know, the fact that these houses are gonna be two-story probably isn't gonna be the fact of having the flat ground and two two-stories looking at each other. So, to me, that's probably not as much of an issue.
Yeah, I was, I'm, we're willing to bring, bring that up, 'cause to me, it's sort of a non-issue because of the terrain differential, and also, the applicant has the right on any of the lots where he could build, you know, single-story, two-story. There isn't a condition. I mean, he can add or subtract whatever number of two-stories. It's only conditioned on the main roadways where they're single-stories, so that's not one. And then, then one of the others, I know, Jerry, you were talking about the setbacks, the 15 versus 20. If the county's saying, "Okay, we want articulation where the house doesn't look like just a straight wall going down," and the garages are set at 20 feet, and if you bring the living out five feet, well, if you reversed it, then you're taking back setbacks. And, and so it's sort of, to me, like a catch-22, 'cause if the county's saying, "Let, you know, from a design element, we want it to not look like a wall, we want the articulation." I don't have a problem with them coming out five feet because of the landscaping and stuff, and it's pretty standard now. I mean, it was different back when the house design, where everything was just a straight front, your garage and the side of your house all looked like one, one square box and, and stuff. And the other part of it, whether it's a big lot, small lot, I mean, most of us buy houses, 'cause if we can have a nicer backyard, it's fine. And I'd rather not impede on somebody's rights, because I think we are going to smaller lots now. I think probably projects coming forward in the future are gonna be smaller and smaller just because of, uh, cost and environmental requirements, so...
I don't disagree with you, Ken. My concern was I didn't want to set a de facto standard. And you've been on this commission long enough to know that as soon as you do something, everybody else comes in and points to it, or the proposition that you allowed it for them, therefore, you have to allow it for me. And I think that Jay gave me enough ammunition to be able to make this distinction in this case, specifically, uh, the unusual topography of the backyards rendered them, you know, somewhat, it significantly reduced the utility of that property without having the, the property a little bit for, forward on the property, as well as consistency with the remainder of that particular subdivision. Now, when we get subdivision X that comes in and wants the same standard and is perfectly flat, I think the record will show, in fact, I'll put it in my motion to make sure that it's clear, that this was approved because of those unique topographical factors that warranted a variance. So, in effect, I agree with you. I'm not so sure I could get there if this was just a flat lot.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I have a question, Michael. This fellow in the light shirt over here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is it your opinion, would it be your opinion that the requested grading that's gonna take place, I guess I should be asking DPW maybe, or somebody over there. I didn't see him hiding behind the post, so I didn't get him. Would the, would it be fair to say that the grading for the slab foundations will improve or not improve the, the change in elevation between this area and the area behind it that we're talking about?
Actually, that grading, that grading is on the other side. It's not, it's not for these lots.
Not in this area.
It's on the other side.
Okay. That's it.
No more comments? Jerry, I think you're...
Well, then let me ease into this. I'll propose a motion in parts. And the first motion would be that the variance requested for eight-foot fences be denied.
Second.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, the remainder of the motion is that the Planning Commission adopt the negative declaration and approve the modification to Atwood Ranch Three subdivision, and approve the single variance now to the front setback as described in our staff report, based upon the findings and conditions in the staff report, and I would modify variance finding number seven to read that. There are special circumstances applicable to this property, including the size, shape, and topography of the subdivision lots, and the reduction in outdoor livable area attributable to these factors, which would make the strict application of chapter 17.60.100D, Placer County Code, result in depriving the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity under identical zoning classification. I would go on to emphasize in that subdivision that, uh, the additional circumstances considered by the commission were, uh, the consistency with the rest of the subdivision and the extreme topography, which significantly impacts the utility of the property, uh, without the setback. Otherwise, as shown in the staff report.
And, uh, Jerry, just so the record is clear, on the bottom of page one of the recommended conditions, it would also include deletion of the words referencing the variance for the six-foot.
Which one, Scott? I can't quite hear you.
It's page, uh, one of 33 on the recommended conditions.
Oh.
There, you'll see there's additional language, and, uh, it would also delete the language referencing the variance to the six-foot fence height in that recommended condition.
Yeah, I would include that in my, uh, motion. Thanks for pointing it out.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And, appeal? Yeah, yeah, and if anybody should, um, wanna appeal our decision, they have to appeal at the planning department, and time to file appeals is 10 calendar days, and the appeal fee is $495.
Good, and, uh, just for the record, Kathy, could we confirm that the motion included the modification as well, not just the variance? I, I don't recall your motion, Jerry.
Did you have the modification?
Modification, you mean the turn down of the, of the fence height?
No, for the, the grading.
Grading.
And the, uh, setback. Was that part of your motion?
The grading and the setback, it was as submitted in the, uh, in the staff report with the exception of the fence.
Okay, great, thank you.
Clarifies it? Okay. Thank you.
Mike, do I ask questions?
Okay, we're gonna, um, take a five-minute break before we go again. You talked to...
Last one.
Yeah, you can come up and talk to us.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we will go ahead and reconvene our planning commission meeting. And we're on our ten-twenty item, zoning text amendment, emergency shelters, transitional and supportive housing. Um, and with that, Jennifer, if you're all set.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Jennifer DeZaklik, planning department, here to talk to you more about the proposed zoning text amendments for emergency shelters, transitional and supportive housing. And if you recall, back in May, I can't believe it's already winter time, fall, and this was spring last time I was here to visit you on this, May fourteenth, we had a workshop. A lot of the information I'm going to be presenting will be potentially a little repetitive, but we'll work through it. Um, and at the end of that workshop in May, we had discussed our next steps was to go back and complete SEQA for our proposed zoning text amendments. Staff has completed that. Entached in your packet is a legislative declaration for the proposed zoning text amendments. And today, we are moving forward to potentially have our public hearing and get a recommendation to go to the board. So first, I want to start back at the beginning and give you a little bit of a background. State law, um, on housing talks about Senate Bill Two and provides clarification for strengthening, um, housing elements throughout the state to have, um, emergency shelters have to be, provide at least one zone without a discretionary action. Talked about some standards and, as well as business practices for this type of use. And then, traditional and supportive housing. In the Senate bill, there wasn't a whole lot of specifics in there. The main thing, and the thing that I'll continue to repeat, is these types of houses, housing uses have to be treated to, treated as residential uses in the same zoning district. That's really the language that came out of the state regulations. As part of the implementation of our housing element, and based on the recommendations out of Senate Bill Two, staff moved forward and the planning commission, and now the board, has approved our new housing element, which had programs G two and G three in it that, um, directed staff to move forward with creating definitions and defining these uses. Um, defining these uses, emergency shelters, um, they're for the immediate need. Um, you need housing now, here's where you go. Transitional is a type of housing where you're moving from homelessness into getting more of a permanent situation. And supportive housing is, just like any other housing, there might be some supplemental services associated with that. And I think-
Jennifer, are these terms defined in state law?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and so what you showed me there on that screen was...
Hmm, this is more, this is more plain English.
Thanks, I deemed that. Okay, thanks.
This is for me to also help understand what the differences in these uses are and for you to understand. Why are we, why do we have to have three different types of housing, you know? Um, again, you saw this previously back in May, and we talked about again, what's the difference between these types of housing. Um, transitional housing, our definition will have a limited stay for twenty-four months, and, um, participation and services are required. And we have some examples, hope, health, and healing, peace for families. Supportive housing, there's no limit. This is permanent type housing that offers support. Sometimes there's services offered, but it's not required by the definition. Um, and there's various facilities in the county that operate under this definition. And then again, emergency shelters provides six months or less stay and may offer programs depending on the service provider. And the gathering in is a great example. And here's the definitions that we're actually adding. I know this is really small on the PowerPoint, but it is in your staff report. Um, definitions for transitional, supportive, and emergency shelters. And currently, a lot of these uses have come in and, um, have been defined as a residential care home. So, we're now making a distinction between residential care home and these types of housing.
I have a question for you, Jennifer. Go back to the previous slide, please. Down, in each one of these housing types, which I assume are the housing types prescribed by state law, um, you adopt the definition or the words used by the state law to define that category of housing, specifically transitional and supporting. Yet, for emergency shelters within Placer County, we use the words temporary resident shelter. Wouldn't it make better sense to be consistent with the state definition?
We could. Um, I think we came to a temporary residential shelter by examining other jurisdictions, how they define that use. Um, I also think-
I'm not arguing with the definition.
No, I mean, I, I understand. Actually, Paul asked me the exact same question because in my staff report, I was interchanging the terms and he like-
That Paul's a smart guy.
Yeah, he had the same question, so. You're not the only one out there. Um, we could, there was another definition, and you would remember this discussion, uh, I think it was with Melanie Heckle came forward, and I'm thinking it was in two thousand and three. I didn't actually go look at the date. Um, and she had a multi-service center definition for emergency shelters. So, you can kind of define these differently if, if we'd like to choose that. We certainly can look at-
What I'm thinking is that all of this is being driven by state law, and we have no alternative but to comply with it. Um, it would be nice if our compliance was strictly conforming to their definitions so that we didn't have to say, "Emergency shelter, oh yeah, we adopted that in this section over here called something else." Be real nice. Yeah, emergency shelter, emergency shelter. That's, that's my concern.
Okay.
At the moment.
Comment noted. Um, as part of also getting into emergency shelters, temporary residential shelters, we're developing some business practices, which is adding a new section to the zoning ordinance. Um, I'm just going to summarize them. The facilities have to be three hundred feet apart. Um, you would need a minor use permit if you're, uh, within five hundred feet of a school, or any zoning district where, uh, this type of use was not permitted. Of course, you have to meet all building, housing codes, fire standards. Some other business practices, one staff member must be present when the facility's open, and providing adequate security lighting on site. And also, getting into discussing the parking requirements. Again, wanted to be flexible here, and really look at it as, um, when these uses come forward. Um, not setting a strict standard, but going more for a guideline. Um, basically, the, the language that's proposed for parking is, um, it's based on the demonstrated need, and we provide a suggestion of one space for every ten adult beds, and one space for a manager, and one space for each employee on site. And all the parking would be required to be off-street and on-site. So, again, I, in most cases, there's one case where we wouldn't be doing a, some type of use permit. So, I think the standard will work because this will be something that will be looked at as we go through the use permit process, if there was ever a facility that came in and either was doing outright new facility, or an occupying existing facility. I did want to go back here. And I have made one change, and it goes back to the original when, when this was first discussed with Melanie Heckle back in two thousand and three. There was some discussion about providing onsite, um, excuse me, a twenty-four-hour emergency phone number posted onsite. And between May and now, I've met with a group called the Placer Consortium on Homelessness, and had some discussion about some of the business practices we were proposing, as well as looked into, is this, um, a good business practice for the county to be looking at? And staff is recommending we eliminate this request, or what was, the history on that was that was requested and discussed back in two thousand and three. I think there are a few of you that were around from that time. And it really had to do with, um, a facility that had been proposed. There were some neighbors that were, um, in opposition to that facility and had come in. That was pretty recent and fresh. So, when this zoning text amendment was moving forward, um, that was one thing that was being discussed. So, I wanted to mention it because I didn't, it was originally discussed. I didn't want to just magically have it disappear. Um, but we are recommending, it's not, um, applicable business practice, that we, we have eliminated that. So, at this point, we've eliminated from the businesses practices for the emergency shelters. But Jerry's going to have a question.
Yeah, what's the logic behind that?
The logic behind eliminating it, or the-
Eliminating the, the number, the requirement for twenty-four hour number for notification? I'm thinking in terms of law enforcement.
Um, one, you know, I think there's a couple of reasons we wouldn't want to require it. Is one, when you get into looking at what type of shelter services are provided, in the cases of like domestic shelters, you really don't want to post anything. And there's people that are sitting back in the audience that can speak better to how this would play out in the real world. You wouldn't want to have any business practice that even identified that it was a shelter, first of all, let alone have a number where somebody could show up and then be harassing or contacting the people that are in that shelter. Um, and the second part is, is that, um, if a cli, if the client happens to go outside and start somehow doing something to the neighbor's property, which was kind of what, you know, the neighbors wanted some ability to have access to, hey, what this is going on, it becomes a sheriff issue. It's not somebody that's going to come out. It's, your twenty-four hour security line is the sheriff. If somebody is on your property, that's what you, that's who you call. Does that answer your question? Um, so, talking about the zoning district changes that are proposed, we'll walk through them again. Looking back again where we started, the state rules talk about making sure that you define these uses, and they're only subject to the rules and requirements of other residential units, uses in the same zoning district. So, if you look at supportive- So if you look at supportive housing and temporary residential housing and transitional housing, the use permits and the allowed zoning districts all match the multifamily zoning as well as the breakpoint of 20 units or more. Does that make sense? I'm getting some questioning looks. So for example, if you come in and want to do a supportive services house and you're more than 21 units and you're in the RM zone, you have to get a use permit, a minor use permit. Just as if you were going to come into the same zone under the RM zoning district and do a for-sale project or market rate project, you'd still have to get a use permit requirement. The only kind of break here is, is that on the 20 units or fewer in the RM zone, it's just zoning clearance for all these uses. So with, moving forward and adding these new definitions, staff determined that we need to change our existing residential care home. So this is the new definition. And I have to point out, my slide here was changed and the first sentence in front of the word director is planning. Your staff report is correct. The PowerPoint, I didn't get the plant, the word planning director in there. And all these definitions again were provided in the May 14 workshop. We also are looking at adding to houses of worship that temporary residential shelters are allowed in, under these, excuse me, under the houses of worship as a providing humanitarian assistance. Included in the definition. So with that, I'm ready to take some questions and we'll have to open up to a public hearing also.
Okay, I guess you're, you're lucky, no questions yet, unless you have one.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Jennifer, what happens if, if we don't approve this?
It goes to the, to the Board?
If you don't approve it?
Yeah. I'm just throwing out some ifs right now.
Um, I guess you would tell, if, if, if there were specific things that you wanted to see changed about it, you could direct staff to go back and make changes and we could move, come back to you. If you just outright don't make a recommendation, I don't know, what would you do?
What we would do is, Mr. Chairman, what we would do is we would provide whatever recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, so this would go to the Board.
Is there some state funding attached to this? I mean, the state's broke already.
I'm not sure if there's state funding attached to it.
I don't know if this is a mandate, but this is an implementation of the housing element, which has already been approved by the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, it's the Planning Commission's recommendation as to the staff's proposal. And as Jennifer says, you could send it back for further review to consider further issues. But at some point, it would go to the Board, either with a recommendation for approval or denial from the Planning Commission and with, with the reasons therefore. And I think what you're talking about, Harry, is whether or not this is a state mandated program and you'd get reimbursements. As anybody knows who's ever applied to the state in order to get a reimbursement for a mandated program, it's a very tedious process. I don't recall if the legislation called that out. It is supposed to call it out when it requires new actions by a local agency. And that's the basis upon which you'd be able to seek reimbursement. But that's probably a separate issue from just the actual compliance with the, with the statute at this point.
Well, I just have a problem if we start the ball rolling and we approve this and it goes to the Board and it's approved. And there is funding involved in it. My next question would be is, any of this? Quite frankly, is there any Acorn? People out there that would be applying for these monies?
Well, at this point, all this does is provides definitions in our zoning ordinance to accommodate a program should the program come forward. There's no, there's no identification of any particular program provider.
Okay. Our hands are tied, we have, we have to pass it on.
I have a question. It may, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, in Placer County, you have several jurisdictions, different cities. Are, pretty much, is there coordination or all the, are all the cities coming up with similar definitions in their zoning ordinances?
Yes and no. I think Roseville already has existing definitions for these uses. And I've had, I've been contacted by other jurisdictions. They're wanting to know, like Rockland is, is watching what we do on this. So it just depends on where the jurisdiction is on implementing the Senate bill. And it was passed in 2008, I believe, and then there was direction in 2008. A memo came out from HCD that said, "Here's some ideas on how to implement SB two," which was a Senate bill that came out with these regulations and mostly talking about emergency shelters. So it's, it's a hit or miss. Some people having to go back and update to be consistent with the law. A lot of people are like us, we just simply don't have a definition, so we're just going to add a definition.
Okay, so this, I guess what I'm thinking about is, you know, like, maybe it's a little bit different area sometimes, but like Placer County, you know, if somebody is in need, they can get a voucher and they go into Auburn and, you know, Auburn may not have the same criteria or-
What we're doing here is really talking about these type of uses and what the zoning ordinance, how they regulate, how we regulate these uses. This isn't getting into providing additional services or providing coordination. Yes, in theory, that happens. We have some service providers that are here today that could tell you all the various coordinations and how this actually happens in the, in the real world. But what we're talking about is looking at the zoning definition. So if somebody comes in and says, "I want to use this facility here as a emergency shelter, as a residential facility," the county can open up its zoning book and say, "Oh, you're in the right zone, here's what you need to do." And, and that was really, again, the, the state law wanted to, because it, right now, it's like, oh, well, what do we define you as? And, and there's some ambiguity there that this clears it up. The state says, "We want this cleared up, this is what you are if you come in being these types of housing."
Okay, so it'd be up to Auburn to update their own ordinance?
Yes, it's up to Auburn to update their ordinance. If, everybody had to do the, you know, everybody has to do the five-year housing element update. So HCD was looking for these programs and I'm sure they looked in other jurisdictions and said, "How are you implementing SB two? We want to see a program, we want to see how you're going to do it." Now, whether they do it in this housing element cycle, that's up to the jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Might as well set it down.
So this is really just adding, walking through the definite, existing definition? Or was there a specific? The change is just saying that if, and this is really the Gathering Inn. Are you familiar with the program that?
No, I'm not.
Basically, it is the nomadic homeless shelter. I'm kind of pointing behind me because Suzie Fawcett with that program is here. She can really explain the details. But basically, the program that they have, they use various churches to provide services for the homeless. And it, it moves around, it rotates based on the needs and what's available. So this is basically adding temporary residential shelter as in-house of worship. They can provide this humanitarian assistance there. So we didn't want there to be a question about if a church was in a zoning district that may not allow for a temporary residential shelter, could they suddenly not have that service there anymore? And we said, "No, that's not what we're trying to do here. That's one of the programs that the county offers." And so we wanted to make sure it was really clear that that use can continue in houses of worship.
Okay, is there anybody else like, okay, you can-
Okay, I'll open it up to the public and anyone that would like to speak to this issue.
Thank you and good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to address the commission. My name is Herb Whitaker and I'm the managing attorney of the Local Office of Legal Services of Northern California. My office is the Civil Legal Aid Program. We provide free legal assistance to low-income clients and seniors in Placer County and a number of other counties in this area. And housing and homelessness are two of the areas that are top priorities for our clients, low-income clients. In addition to that, I wear a number of other hats. One of them is that I'm on the Advisory Council for the Gathering Inn Homeless Shelter. I'm not going to talk a great deal about that because Suzie DeFawcett, the executive director of that program, is, is here. But I was very pleased to see that you even had the logo for the Gathering Inn up there on the, on the PowerPoint presentation. I'm also very pleased to see that we have this definition included in the new ordinance to recognize the work that the Gathering Inn is, is doing. In addition to that, I'm also a member of the Placer Consortium on Homelessness and Affordable Housing. That's something that's been referenced today. And I noticed a number of my clients listed up there in the PowerPoint with reference to some of the other providers that have been included in the PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to be very brief and I just want to say, to begin with, that I think that this is a very, very positive step. So unlike some of my past presentations, I'm not here to, to complain about, about things. I think that this is a very positive step and, and I certainly appreciate that the county is moving forward with this process. And for all the reasons that have been indicated by staff, I think that this is, is very important. One thing that I would like to highlight, however, is that homelessness is on the rise. Homelessness is definitely on the rise. I just got back from a, a staff meeting with our, our legal services program and we had special sessions on homelessness for that very reason, because it is on, on the rise. There was a period of time there because of the Department of HUD programs where chronic homelessness was starting to come down because HUD was funding this homeless-first type of project. But now that the economy has turned down, so many people are losing their jobs and through the foreclosures that we're experiencing, homelessness is on the rise. And it's on the rise with people that used to be, used to consider themselves to be exempt from homelessness and protected from homeless, from homelessness. And so the demands that are being placed on our homeless providers right now is soaring. At the same time that the amount of services and funding for homeless programs is, is shrinking. And all you have to do is look in the Sacramento Bee and you'll see the stories about the homeless camps in Sacramento and the fights that are, that are taking place there about where homeless people should be allowed to go. We haven't had those fights in Placer County, you know, thank goodness, yet. But we need to recognize the fact that homelessness is a very, very severe problem and it's getting worse and it's getting worse in Placer County. And that's one of the reasons that SB two was passed. Now, I, I would ask the commission to recognize that, okay, compliance with the law is one of the things that of course you need to be very concerned about. That's one of the reasons that this amendment is being proposed. But I would also like this commission to think about the purpose behind SB two. The purpose behind SB two is to have land use rules that will actually encourage the development of homeless services and homeless shelters. And does this, does this statute do it? I think it does it to some degree and so I think that this statute, this ordinance needs to be, to be passed. But I would like to see it go a, a bit further because we don't have a permanent homeless shelter in Placer County, anywhere in Placer County. And we have, at the Placer Consortium on Homelessness and Affordable Housing, we've talked about this for years and we have worked on this for years. How can we get a, a, a shelter here in Placer County? And the first hurdle is the land use hurdle. Because anywhere we go, we're not going to be able to find land that's affordable, that's properly zoned. And, and this is the big hurdle that will overcome the neighborhood opposition, the NIMBY opposition, "Not in my backyard." Sure, you can build a shelter, but don't build it in my backyard. And that's why I want to focus on this one element of SB two, which is that it requires that the county identify at least one zone where a homeless shelter can be built of right without conditions so that when the neighborhood groups come forward and they want to oppose a homeless shelter in their neighborhood, they're not going to be able to kill the project by the weight of their, of their opposition. So if we take a look at what's being proposed today, and I'll have to admit, I, you know, I find the, the material somewhat confusing. But as I read the material, it looks like the only site that has been identified as a by-right site where you can build an emergency shelter without prior approval is a situation where you're in a multifamily zone and you're proposing a development of 20 or fewer. That's, that's the only narrow area where we actually have by-right development. And that's where I would like to see this ordinance expanded. And as, as a matter of fact, I would like to, to ask staff if they can explain to us why they settled on this limit of 20 people or fewer. Now, I know that that was, that was addressed, but I, I didn't quite understand the explanation. So maybe we'll be able to get a little bit more explanation. I mean, I can understand if, if a, if a site is limited to 20 or fewer per acre and you only have one acre, then of course, the homeless shelter should have the same restriction as any, any other development. But if you're dealing with a, a multiple-acre development that, that should be able to hold more than 20 people, my question is, why should the by-right development be limited to, to 20? As a practical matter, it is extremely difficult to develop an, an affordable housing shelter, especially a homeless shelter. And because of the economics involved, you're going to have to have a facility that will hold more than 20 people. And so anyone that comes forward with sufficient funding and has sufficient land to be able to develop, build a, a shelter is going to run into this 20, 20-person limit. If they go over 20 persons, they're going to have to be right here back before the commission arguing for some sort of conditional use permit. And then you're going to have this room filled with people, with neighbors arguing that it's a great idea, but it's the wrong location, it shouldn't be, you know, near, near my neighborhood. So that's my first question, why we should have this, this limit of 20 persons for the by-right development in the multifamily zone. My second question is why the, the by-right development should be limited only to the multifamily zone? Why couldn't this by-right development also be extended to the neighborhood commercial zone? My third question is, why does it have to be limited to neighborhood commercial? Why couldn't it also be extended to commercial zones in general? One of the advantages of having a homeless shelter in a commercial zone is it's going to be a place where it's more accessible to transportation, more accessible to services for the, for the homeless who need those types of services to be able to break past the barriers for their homelessness so that they can get back on their feet and become productive members of society, at least for, for some of them. So those are really the, the only issues that I want to present in the form of questions as to why we should have these limits. I also have just a few other questions in terms of the business practices, specifically with respect to the staffing requirements and the parking requirements. Those may also be not just onerous, those might be things that would, would stop a homeless shelter from being developed at, at all. The, the final thing I want to mention is I, I appreciate the fact that the phone, the 24-hour phone line requirement has been removed. And if you want to talk about that some more, I think I might have been involved in one of the proposals and one of the developments many years ago where we offered a 24-hour- telephone service as a response to the neighbors who were complaining that there would be this shelter in their neighborhood and they wouldn't have any place that they would be able to call, to be able to register their complaints. And this is an example of a situation where we were trying to bend over backwards in order to get the facility built and we made this offer and now all of a sudden, it sort of becomes this institutionalized notion that every facility should have a 24-hour hotline, which certainly is not the case. So I certainly appreciate the fact that this was taken out. Uh, I will let other speakers address the staffing and parking issues, but I would ask the commission to really examine these limits that have been placed on the by-right development. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Susie DeFosse and I'm here representing the Placer Consortium on Homelessness, PCOH. You've seen us referenced in your document. Our goal is to end homelessness in Placer County. We're a group of community-based organizations who provide services, shelter, and support for this growing population of homelessness. We've read the zoning text in front of the commission today and support the recommendations, but we have a couple of exceptions to look at, please. Considering the staffing, and this would be in section 1756, 295(c)(2), that one staff member be on-site at all times while the temporary residents are present, I would ask that this may not be an affordable thing for a shelter to take care of. If there are some residents that are on this campus doing janitorial or other security during non-operating hours, it would be very difficult for a homeless shelter to pay for a staff member to supervise that. Also, within the same section regarding paragraph D, parking, it requires that there be one parking place per 10 adult beds and one for the manager and one for each staff person. Most shelters are located in older sections of town where the land use plan does not require such high stringent parking. And I would hate for a shelter to be rejected from a site because of being short one or two parking spots. As far as the recommendation for the 24-hour security phone line, we agree that that is something that should not be available. I know I run a shelter and if I had a 24-hour hotline phone out in front of my shelter, I would do nothing but answer phone calls that were coming in from harassed, to harass the shelter. Particularly if we were to discharge somebody for non-compliance, that would, the phone would be in use most of the time. All the police departments know where the shelters are located. They have direct lines to the management of the shelter and they have direct lines to the line staff that are working at the shelters those nights. So as far as the security line, the police do have numbers and so does the sheriff's department. The other thing is, as the neighborhood, if they needed to complain, anything that happened off the shelter property would be, the complaining line would go to the police department since the shelter has no way of maintaining anybody's behavior once they step off of the property of the shelter. So we appreciate the staff and how they've investigated this and brought us into being part of this planning process and we appreciate the recommendations before you and want to thank you for the opportunity to have a voice in this.
Thank you, sir.
David Wiltsey, I'm the chairperson of the Weimar Applegate Colfax MAC. I noticed in the staff material that this negative declaration and the other accompanying materials were sent to all MACs. However, it hasn't been formally presented to our MAC yet in any manner and apparently, since you're going to be taking action today, neither our MAC nor any of the other 12 MACs would have any opportunity to review or comment on these materials prior to the Planning Commission action. I guess I have a bias. It's my contention that the MACs provide a useful role and could bring some useful concerns perhaps into the, into play that the Planning Commission might benefit from. And I would ask the MACs be included. Now, obviously, the MACs could be more effectively included and at the Board of Supervisors level, but I would hope that the MACs would be able to have a chance to review these materials and comment prior to Planning Commission action. So it would be my request that you postpone any action. I have some substantive comments as well on the materials, but my primary concern is that the MACs at a localized level be allowed to comment. Now, the, all these materials are so generalized that it's difficult for me to get my teeth into them personally and I would think that you all would have the same problems. The negative declaration has no impact on anything, absolutely no impact on any one of the scores of environmental criteria that are spelled out. Now granted, if the action is the passage of a piece of paper, then there's no impact to that, but down the line, there are obviously impacts. And to me, it's quizzical that the negative declaration on this particular set of zoning amendments could say that there's no impact on sheriff protection, no impact on other governmental services, no impact on provision of water or sewer services. I, obviously, we're not dealing with a specific project here. But what is the point of the environmental document if it's simply going to say there's absolutely no impact to the action being taken here today? There's an intellectual gap here that I'm having trouble getting my teeth into. To me, this is setting up a more permissive system for approval of these facilities. I understand there are serious problems with homelessness in this county and elsewhere. Sacramento County now is going through some real tribulations. I'm not saying that we shouldn't address the problem. I think we should address it much more aggressively than we are. But I'm not sure that by liberalizing the zoning ordinance is the proper approach to actually solving the problem on the ground. To me, I would think that there would be a more systematic plan for dealing with homelessness, that plan resulting in identification of specific sites or at least a set of very, very precise criteria that could be applied for site selection for the various kinds of homeless facilities. And then from that point on, go and select the sites and build them. I've always been an advocate of Doitt Center as a perfect location for different kinds of homeless shelters. It's got everything you need. It's got the public transportation, it's got the public services, the social services are here, the law enforcement services, and it's in a good location as far as the daily comings and goings of the residents, as far as commercial activities and places where jobs would be available. But the simple act of passing this extremely abstract set of zoning changes doesn't, I don't think it really gets us any closer to solving the problem than we were before. My most specific experience with the homeless situation is the Acres of Hope that was located and still located in the Applegate area. And although it's operated very successfully and it's been a real public service and benefited the people who are living there, and it has, in my observation, has not been in any way an adverse facility, but the way it was approved really didn't really give much opportunity for local people to express their concerns and have those concerns assuaged. I don't see that amending the zoning ordinance as being proposed here would make it any easier, it would make it somewhat easier to locate facilities, but I don't think that the existing zoning ordinance or set of rules and regulations in Placer County make it difficult, particularly difficult or impossible. In that particular case, it was really quite simple for the applicants to identify a downtrodden motel, purchase that motel, which had been intentionally run by the previous owner, purchase it for a song, and in cooperation with the county, improve the property and turn it into a temporary shelter for women and children. But in my opinion, it's impossible for any individual, be it Planning Commission member, a member of the Board of Supervisors, or a member of the general public, to really understand what the implications would be of all these changes unless you apply them to specific situations. And again, I think the better approach would be to have a more coherent plan for dealing with the problem, including identifying a number of sites in the county, maybe a half a dozen specific sites that really meet the criteria, and then get on with building or providing shelter at those sites rather than just opening the door and liberalizing the zoning ordinance to a point where it's very difficult for people to come to grips with what the implications might be. But again, coming back to my original concern, I would hope that the MACs at some point would be able to have input to these zoning amendments. These are very important and I think the MACs have as much a role in reviewing more generalized changes to the land use provisions and zoning provisions in the county as they do specific projects that come before them. So thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Scott. To what extent does mandatory compliance with this new state law trump CEQA? And where I'm going is this, let's say that the environmental document that's attached to our staff report came to the conclusion, like Dave was talking about here, that this was going to destroy the environment. Are we still mandated to comply with SB two?
I think you would be. What it would do is drive the document into an environmental impact report. You would examine alternatives in an environmental impact report. The alternatives would be something different than what's required under the state law ordinance. They would have to be rejected as being infeasible. So essentially, what you would end up with is probably significant and unavoidable impacts as a result of the ordinance.
Okay, they may be unavoidable and significant, but we would still have to comply with state law.
Correct.
So to some degree, it, in effect, trumps CEQA?
Well, understanding that CEQA is a disclosure document, not a, does not set the standard for your compliance with state law. So CEQA would disclose those impacts, you just may not be able to mitigate them to less than significant because you have to comply with state law.
And Paul and Jennifer, one of the questions I have is, what is the scope of this hearing? This started off with a procedure to implement SB two and Herb brought up good points, you know, basically go into the merits of the underlying statute itself that we've heard numerous times in this commission. Are we, as part of this proceeding, trying to revisit the issue of homeless shelters throughout the county or are we just trying at the minimum level to implement SB two and leave the other discussion for another day?
I'm not really sure I 100% understand your question, but, okay, getting back to why it is we're here today, that initial question was, again, implementation of the housing element, which we, you know, just recently adopted a new housing element. As part of implementation of that housing element, we've set goals and policies and programs in place that said, the county should do this, the county should do that. So as part of that document that we approved, we did say in the Program G2 and G3 that we would go through and amend our zoning ordinance to update and be consistent with SB, the Senate Bill two. So we're not only implementing the state law, we're implementing our own policies and programs that we just said, we're going to go ahead and do this. And also, you know, in discussion of kind of responding or talking about Herb and some of his comments, we can actually discuss and continue to discuss, you know, the limits on homeless shelters and what is the appropriate number and size. I would ask him, he probably has more of a library of information to pull from of what is a recommended standard. Staff, you know, I went from finding the extremes to 100 beds to not having a standard. So I came and used the 20-bed limit as it was consistent with our multifamily and that was our breaking point in our existing. And I felt that was a reasonable approach to take. Can we change it? We certainly can look at changing it, we can discuss it. It's the pleasure of what you want to have.
One question though, Jennifer, on that 20, that's a standard where they don't really have to go through a real involved process where if they wanted to do a 100-bed unit, then they're going to have to open it up, just like a commercial project and go through all that and come before us and everybody else.
It would be a use permit process. And getting back into, you know, kind of the consideration of why we only require zoning clearance for the RM zone and not the commercial zones was, you know, this type of use is typically a residential use. And when you have residential and commercial uses together in the same zoning district, you have potential for conflicts. What's the traditional way we deal with those conflicts? It's through the use permit process to say, you need a bigger setback, you need some vegetation here, you need your driveway to come in here, you need your security lighting to be here. You know, it really gets into that project-specific. And in this case, we're not, for CEQA, we're not talking about anybody going out and turning dirt. So the impacts of just, you know, changing our zoning ordinance, there is no impact. But if somebody were to come in and want to build a 100-bed, you know, 100-bed shelter, it would have to go through the process of looking at, does it comply with CEQA? Do they need, what kind of environmental review would that type of project need? So by moving forward today and looking at this, you're not saying we won't ever do CEQA on any project that comes forward under the emergency shelter ordinance or the supportive housing. It's, that will be looked at on a project-by-project basis. So.
Go ahead.
Is there any discussion about not taking this to the MACs ahead of time? Is there any thought on that or is there a reason for that?
We typically do not, and we typically do not go to MACs on zoning text amendments that are countywide. And that's my understanding. I'm kind of looking at Paul. If it's really, if the zoning text amendment is specific to an area, we will visit the MACs.
And what we did with this particular project, we did transmit all the copies of the staff report to the MAC and if it's the Planning Commission's pleasure, we'd be more than happy to go back to the MACs and make a presentation to them for the Board of Supervisors.
I was tempted to say, I think it should go to the MACs and let them understand not only what we're doing, but what the state has done that caused us to do this so that we have sort of, we have sort of a package deal that the public then understands because when these facilities start showing up in these communities and they say, we've never heard anything about this, or you didn't tell us what was happening or what the effect was, we can then say, well, we did have, the MACs did hear this, they made some recommendations and then, and bring it back to the commission. And somehow that seems, I understand it's typically not done, but I think this is a little different situation where you're affecting individual communities over time and maybe that effect should be loaded or weighted in such a way that some communities could better adjust to a large facility in them than others. And I guess, am I making myself clear?
Just for the record, the May staff report was transmitted to all the MACs for their information and no requests were received from any MAC for presentations between May and now. So the MACs have been informed, at least in May, and were provided with this as well. As Jennifer said, typically, county-wide zoning text amendments don't go to MACs. That's not to say it can't happen, but the information was already transmitted to the MACs and for informational purposes, one of the things to keep in mind is it would be very difficult to have different standards applicable in different MACs on an issue like this. There's an interest in keeping... There's, there's an interest in keeping some county-wide uniformity on, on issues like this.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Scott. I, I would tend to deal with that with a range of, of sizes. In other words, you start out with 15 or 20, and then maybe up to, depending upon the findings made in your environmental document, or whatever the case may be.
And just so the record's clear, to emphasize on the issue of the environmental document, as Jennifer said, anything that requires a subsequent discretionary application will go through CEQA.
Right.
So this environmental document, the reason it's a negative declaration is because there are no project-specific impacts which have been identified at this point in time because it is a county-wide zoning text amendment. So that's, that's why it is what it is. It's strictly speaking hypothetical if it needed an environmental impact report. That just isn't the case for this level of, of environmental document.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
No, I'd like to hear what the rest of the public have to say.
Okay. Okay, keep, come back on, yeah.
Well, we, I had one, my, David Loyah, Executive Director of the Lazarus Project. We currently have four transitional housing programs, three within the city of Roseville, one in the, on Annabelle off Sierra College in Douglas Boulevard, which technically is Placer County. First, just a, a general question I had in regards to transitional housing, 20 or fewer units, and supportive housing, 20 or fewer units being put in a residential multifamily. I noticed there's a conditional use permit, and one of, we had a question on, on why did we have to have a conditional use permit if we wanted to put maybe a home with six people or something in there? So just a, a general question on that that you can answer. And then more generally, and, and for me in its most simple form, what this document does, it gives us an opportunity as providers of housing and support services, whether it be shelter, transition, or permanent. It gives us a, a chance to do what we do, just like a developer or a business would come in and do what they do, whether we wanted to open up a multifamily unit, a small transitional home, or a shelter. Just like any other business, we can come in and we can, within all the, the, the boundaries that are set by the counties, we can come in and, and create our business for the betterment of the community. It doesn't put any more restrictions, it doesn't put any less restrictions on us. For us, who have served the county, doing homeless provisions for a very long time, it finally opens up the door that we could be treated equally, just like a developer or just like a business. Because in, in all reality, we're looked upon often as those people. Oh, they provide those services, you know? I always say, one of the things we always get is, well, just God bless you for what you do. It must be very rewarding. Just don't do it around my neighborhood. But God bless you for what you do. Well, that's kind of tough because then we want to do what we want to do, and there's so many restrictions because we're, quote, homeless providers. So what this document does, it gives us an opportunity for whether it's the Gathering Inn, or the Lazarus Project, or the county, to go and provide services that we already need for residents within our own community. And let me be clear, you know, most of all we serve are residents in, in our community. There's no, most people know that, you know, the day I got the phone call from Clark Freitas, a longtime Rosevillian, saying, can you help my son, Mark? We don't know what to do. Born here, went to school here, had employment here, had some difficulties. That's, that's who we do. These are your neighbors, these are your friends, these are your relatives. What this document can do, if you pass it, gives us an opportunity to do more of that without having that those people can't be here, or we don't want those type of services around here. So it just gives us an even playing field as any other developer, any other program would come along and, and, you know, seek out services. If, if this was, if, if we did programs for underprivileged children, this wouldn't even be an issue. It just wouldn't. So what I would like to see is a possible revisit, as Herb would say, about identifying some sites that perhaps our, our shelter provider could go, it's a possibility. Now, let me guarantee, let me just tell you, I can, I can guarantee Suzie is not going to reach into her back pocket and pull out $4 million to gain site control and build a shelter. Okay? You know, I'm, I'm just going to be happy if she can do $4, okay, to buy me another cup of coffee. I, yeah. We, we, we don't have, you, you know, remember, when it, when it comes to funding homeless programs, we're on the bottom of the barrel. We're right above illegal immigration and parolees, and then you have homeless service providers. We're on the bottom of the barrel when it comes to funding. And even with that, we know someday we might have an opportunity to build an adequate, productive interim housing or shelter that will take care of the needs of a growing county. We will have an opportunity to build some permanent supportive housing that will take care of the needs of the growing community, whose goal is not to look like Sacramento. That's our goal. We really, nobody wants, and, and I'm not going to be really politically incorrect, shockingly, nobody really wants the loaves and fishes here. But I can tell you, by the year 2019, if we don't do anything, that's where we're headed, crunch the numbers. That's where we're going by the year 2019. We don't want that. So by giving us this fair playing field, treating us equally like any other business or any other developer, gives us an opportunity to cast a vision, to work with the counties and the cities and the community to build the services that we need for when our county starts to grow more and more. We will know that I can look at any of you here on the board, anybody out here, and say, we have some safety net services to help those who are down on their luck, who mental health has deteriorated to a point where they need some help, or anybody perhaps even with the substance abuse can overcome it and get on with their life. That's all this document's really doing. It's not projecting out that we're going to go build this, we're going to go do this, we're going to go do this. It just begins to say, you know, citizens of Placer County, we have now created a way that these organizations can do what they do for the benefit of you. So with a few caveats, such as maybe some site control, unless somebody wants to donate $4 million, we can pass this, and then we'll get on with our business, and maybe one day, maybe one day, we'll be back here, and we will have a project that has gone through all the reviews, and everybody can say, now, that's Placer County. That is a great project for this community. And they worked well with the community, well with the Planning Commission, and well with the Board of Supervisors. By gosh, let's do this. That's where we're going, that's what we want to see. Thank you.
Is there any, anyone else in the audience that wants to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I'll close it off and bring it back to the commission.
I have a couple of comments. One is that I'm not convinced that the implementation of the Senate bill is ready for prime time, and by that I mean for me to recommend it for consideration by the Board of Supervisors. And part of the reason is I think it's somewhat incomplete. I was concerned with the issues that Herb raised, and that is, for example, why is there no accommodation in the industrial area? I heard Jennifer's comments about commercial, and, and she has good points. It is somewhat inconsistent. On the other hand, maybe there's a vacant building in an industrial area that would do it. I mean, you certainly don't run into the opposition from the neighbors. But more importantly is it wasn't considered and discussed. And to me, that's, that's incomplete. I'm also concerned about Dave's, Dave's comments. Yeah, it probably was sent to you, Dave, Welty, and it just got overlooked. Well, you know, maybe take another whack at it. I just don't think we're quite ready to, to recommend this go forward. I want to implement it, but I think we need to take another look and see if we can be as comprehensive as possible because the issues that are being raised, raised here by the folks are very real, and we're going to have to, to face them sooner or later. So let's do it now.
And maybe if, since the MACs did not respond to this packet of material that was sent out, at the very least, a follow-up note to those MACs could say, you know, did you read the material? Did you have any comments? It's going back to the Planning Commission soon, and we appreciate your input. It gets, gets, gets something along those lines so that at least we have, we, we have something to say, you know, we've made an effort in those communities to try to get your input.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyone else?
My recommendation is we stick it, send it back to staff for further discussions with Herb Whittaker and his group, and Suzie, send a note up to the MACs, and bring it back here when those discussions are complete. So when the question is asked of this commission, why is the number 20 or fewer, why isn't it included in industrial and whatnot? It was discussed, and it was decided that, whatever the result is.
So are you making a formal motion?
So can I ask a question really quickly? I need some clarification. Are you suggesting that we should go to all MACs? Are you suggesting that we should maybe reach out through the Board of Supervisors aides and maybe see if they would like staff to come provide a presentation and get a recommendation on this? Because if it's all MACs, it's going to take a while. If it's maybe touch base with MACs and see if they are interested in, in having a presentation, we might want to continue this to a date certain to avoid having to go back and do some re-noticing on our part. But I just, I wanted a clarification there.
I guess I would be happy to limit it to those MACs that requested more information or a presentation by staff, and not just automatically do it, but request of them that, you know, we're anxious to hear their input on that material that was sent to them, and they haven't commented on it. But I'm not suggesting that we should go out and force ourselves on them if they're not interested in it.
Yeah, maybe get back to each one where you can do it quickly, and then if you do just a open presentation to all the interested parties, and if there's no response, then, then it'd come back.
But there should be discussions with the folks who are in this room who made presentations who raised questions and need to have those addressed. They may not agree in the ultimate outcome, but they need to have had those discussions so that we can be assured that it was given as wide dissemination as possible. And for that reason, I don't think that we can reschedule this to a date certain, it'll have to be re-noticed. That was my motion.
So that's your motion?
Do you remember what it was? It was more than five seconds ago.
Okay, we have a motion, basically, to
Send it back to staff.
Send it back to staff to notify all the MACs, and if they have any requests for, for more information, you can put on a presentation for them. That way, you can set the time with them and maybe get them all together at one time to, to do it, and then bring up all the issues that came up today, and then come back before.
It was more than that. It was also to have discussion with the interested parties, to, to take care of their concerns before we come to this hearing. I'd like to be able to forward to the Board of Supervisors a, a document that we've all agreed on, and that if there are specific areas of disagreement, they've been discussed. Also, Jennifer, one thing that I kind of alluded to earlier on, and that is, it would sure be nice if the language included in our stat, in our ordinance is the same as that included in the state language specifically with reference to emergency shelters, so that we can have an easy cross-reference.
Okay, if that's the motion?
Second.
You got a motion second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrence, thank you all. That was our last item of the day. So thank you for coming.